Four o'clock.
Waiting for Apple to pound its four o'clock.
Where's the flag?
We have seventeen. I'd like to call this meeting to order at four o'clock and for those who are able, please stand and join us as a pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like a motion to adjourn to executive session for matters relating to the hiring person others know.
So moved. Second?
Questions, comments, discussions, all in favor, opposed, abstentions, we plan to return to public session at five thirty. Thank you.
We're returning from executive session at five thirty-three. Can I have a motion to, to run please?
Go ahead.
Second, Jamie. Questions, comments, discussions? All in favor? Opposed? Abstention. Motion carries. And I need to modify the agenda because we did not approve the minutes before we went to executive session. So be it resolved upon the recommendation of suburban kind of schools. The Board of Education for the Terrenceburg Center School District hereby approves the Board of Education minutes from July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five as presented. And so, second?
Certainly.
Jamie, questions, comments, or changes? All in favor? Opposed? Abstention. Motion carries. And now moving on to modifications to the agenda. Are there any, Tina?
Everything's...
Everything is current?
Yep.
Okay, moving on to privilege to the floor. Do we have anybody who's?
No one has signed up.
No one's signed up?
No, I'm just here to...
Okay. Brenda?
I've already tried to get everyone's seat.
Are you just listening, Brenda? I'll take that.
It muted. Hi, Brenda.
Put a message in the chat if you do want to say something after and we can come back to you.
There's no force.
Moving on, we have received no correspondence. And now we will have our administrators report.
I'll start with the administrator's reports. A couple of things I'm going to share highlights from the high school and middle school. But before I do that, Josh, are you able to pull up our district website? Thank you. But I just wanted to take a moment to, to recognize as we know there's been shifts at the state level and then also within our district in terms of our internet free devices, cell phones in particular. And we have recently provided a link. If you just scroll down a little bit farther next to athletics and schools, it says cellphone policy. So this was just recently updated. So not only does this include the updates to the New York State law, which are beginning September one, and all of our buildings across the campus. It's a statewide, so you can link the state law information, also our district board policy. There's a link there. And if you scroll down a little bit farther, you can see that we have an FAQ. And so thank you to Jeannie Day, Jean Lomax, and Hillary Ewing, our building leaders. They took the time to just think about some of the feedback that we've received from the community, tried to answer questions as far as just general information, as far as what does this look like as far as cell phones in each of the buildings. And one thing that I did want to emphasize is that we truly are not seeing major shifts in the elementary and the middle school. Really, we are continuing the practices that we've done already. And I know I mentioned this in the July meetings, but I just wanted to emphasize that we are looking at shifts in the high school. Essentially, the way that the law reads and our policy does reflect that, that students from bell to bell, so from eight AM to two forty-five PM, students are not able to have on their person a device that connects to the internet. The exception is they do have school issued devices. In the far corner there of the library, you can see the Chromebooks that are geared up for high school students. And so those are available. There are exceptions. And you can see there is that question there. Are there any exceptions? Yes, there are. If a student happens to have an IEP, a five oh four, individual healthcare plan, there are exceptions. We also will have our teams in terms of teachers and principals, if there are specific needs, that will be cleared through the building administrator. And so please, you know, for our community, those who are watching, take advantage and look at some of the information that we've provided. The buildings will also be sending very soon their welcome back communication, which will also share information here for students and families. I know Mina asked at our last meeting, what does the communication look like for students? Ms. Ewing is not here this evening, but I anticipate next week with Ms. Ewing and Mr. Flood that they'll be sharing out information and then also for opening days with students. I just wanted to make mention of that on our site. Thanks for Tina for supporting that and our building leaders as well. Couple of quick highlights from the, the middle school. So Jean Lomax just wanted to mention that a huge gratitude, and this is really for all, all three buildings. Such gratitude that we have for our cleaners, our building grounds crews, our teachers, everyone working tirelessly. I can't believe that it's August nineteenth. We're right around the corner. Welcome back all teachers and staff on September second and third. And then students are starting with us on September fourth and fifth. And so we are, we are gearing up right now with our final, our finishing touches for our buildings and our spaces and our grounds, which is a busy time, also quite exciting as well. And then we will also be sending out information, our welcome back from both middle school, high school, and elementary as far as our open house. And I know Jeannie will speak to that in just a moment. And so you'll receive that information in the mail. It'll talk about just as far as school supplies that students need. There'll be grade level or teacher specific information. Jeannie, do you want to talk briefly about elementary? And then I'll go to another one. Thank you.
So it's been an exciting summer at the elementary school. We welcomed our pre-K students in July for screening, which is always so much fun. And they more often than not think this school has been started, so they've not... But it's always wonderful to meet our, our youngest students. Last week, we were able to send out all the summer letters to our families. So everyone knows who their teacher is, if they haven't heard already. They got their supply list and that kind of starts the excitement of the year. For any students who are joining us after our screening and our tours have already happened, we have screening and tour set up next week on Monday and Tuesday. So we will welcome in any new families at that time. Just to echo what Megan said, the building looks amazing. So big thank you to Sharon, Marcus, and Seth who have just... It's incredible with the work that they do. It's really looking wonderful. We're preparing for our big open house, which as all of you know, is a high energy event the night before school starts, where everyone comes, sees where their desk is, their cubby, drops off their supplies. It's very excited and then we send them home. And we hope these... So we're... You know, it's this time of year where we, we really wish we had the students back. It's been too quiet too long. It's way too clean. We need them to come back and bring their energy. So we're really looking forward to it. We are almost completely staffed at the elementary school. We are getting very close. And just to kind of give you a heads up of something we have been working on for about a year, we've been working on our new report cards. And our staff finalized them in the spring and they are in development at Bosse's right now. So this fall I will be able to come back and share with you kind of how those are looking. The focus of that was to simplify. So we had gone to all standards based report card, listing every standard, and it was a lot of information. So we've been working to really make it so that it's more understandable for parents and more clear how their students are doing and what they're going to help them with. So I look forward to sharing that this fall. That's it.
Good evening. Thanks. Just a couple other quick notes that I wanted to, to add. From the, the buzz on campus, we have many students are back here athletes for sports, which began yesterday. And so it's great to see everyone here. This is also the time of year in which students at the middle school and high school want to know about their schedules. I mean, a lot of questions, what do my schedule look like? That exciting time. And so within the next week, there'll be information shared from both the middle school and high school as far as schedules. We know that there may be some changes that need to happen. Families and students can reach out to school counselors if they have questions in terms of any adjustments that are needed. With that being said, this is also the time of year which we would like to have all of our staff, teachers secured and, and ready to go. And you'll see on tonight's agenda that we have several resignations. And we are also in the process of hiring teachers as well, staff members. And so I recall my first year starting, and I started in August of two thousand eighteen. And I was in the process of hiring someone the Friday afternoon before Labor Day weekend, less than ideal. But it all worked out and we came through with a wonderful plan. And so some people might have questions. As I said, it's August nineteenth. We have several teaching positions that we're in the process of replacing right now. Really thankful for our administrative team and how quickly we've been able to post our positions. We've had some high qualified candidates and we were able to move very quickly with interviews. So I'm thankful for everybody's team efforts. And we have recommendations just even this evening for the Board of Education. And so I'm thankful again for that process and knowing that we are in a... um we are in a good spot moving forward and I anticipate we will continue with our interviews um Thursday and even early next week. So we will make sure as we know that it's important to have the schedules and communication out to families of students that we will continue and uh do our best to be good.
Ask the question, please. Check and follow up on on Jeanie, the, the new report cards. Um you'd mentioned like there's uh simplified where students would need support or where they could improve. Is there also place for, for these teachers to, to also list what they're good at because you know having the pos- some positive with some constriction criticism is so important.
And I think that's one of our strengths is really talking about the students, I, I um strengths and what they're good at. Um and and what some of the feedback we get is it's great, but what, you know, at home, what would you like me to work on? So we will continue to really focus on all the positives because there are so many. And one of the benefits of the new report card is there's a lot more room for comments. So we were really limited before and now that, you know, we should be able to do a lot more comments.
Excellent. Thank you.
I appreciate that. As a parent, that's always liked. I mean, I, not that I don't value the number or letter or whatever that's next to it, but it's the comments that are so important, I find. So I really, that's great to hear that there's.
I also think that like, you know, we've, we've had kids come to the system and saving the report cards and see the growth from, from semester to semester, year to year, that it's nice that, that this is getting a bit of a more personal touch to it too. So thank you.
We'll spend some follow-up time. I'm sorry, Angie, I know you have a couple of comments as well, but we, just looking at Jean's additional notes here. Um there was a successful pilot with the seventh grade team this past year, their standard space report cards. And so those will be implemented across the entire um middle school. So in a future board meeting, it'd be really helpful to have our buildings present in terms of our reporting. Um and also how we're aligning with the portrait of graduate and the changes that are happening with New York State. So we'll, we'll share up that information that side with us. Sorry, Angie.
Uh I have a couple of updates for students with disabilities. We are still hiring. You and I have been working hard on that. Uh we've had seven move-ins, we're working on placements. And let's see, for grants, uh Amanda and I have been working very hard all summer to finalize the grants. They just finally um released some of the allocations that we were waiting for, for title grants, so we should be wrapping all of those um grants up by the next week or so. Uh for English language learners, I'm happy to report, we did get the nicest slots for so every spring our students that are learning English take a proficiency exam in addition to other exams to see their growth in English. And we have some really, really great growth in our students this year. So that was really nice to see. It really helps to drive our services and our minutes for next year. Um the schedules are for E and O and for special ed are going strong. I'd say they're very, very close to being finalized, so that's really good. Um we've had in our English language learners, we had two students move out as bring moves in, so our numbers are staying um pretty stable, seven move-ins in special. To cross off. Been doing a lot of registration and a lot of translation in the district office, so it's, it's a busy time.
For the, I think this is open for the first year, we have um translated all of our forms into Spanish, so we have the Spanish versions of everything.
Oh, the one other thing I had on here was just how we were created this summer to streamline the process for specialers. I think you'll see in tonight's agenda for our support staff, so that was a combined effort with a few of us and support staff.
Josh, are you able to pull up the uh overview? There's the four slides regarding the upcoming capital project. We're gonna add one more piece to the administrative report. Amanda and I are gonna tag team on this.
Now, not at the.
That's okay.
I knew we were gonna hear it at some point. I just wasn't sure exactly what time.
So later in the agenda, you'll see that we have um several uh resolutions in terms of the capital project. And so Amanda and I thought it would be helpful just to provide a very brief overview as far as where we are with our upcoming capital project and the timeline and our communication plan. So if you see here, there are four uh major areas in terms of this capital project, which right now the timeline is to start in twenty twenty seven. Which seems like really far away, but it's not. Um so these four areas that we're looking at, prioritizing information from our building condition survey and feedback from stakeholders, uh recognizing right now, uh looking at safety and security. Forming arts, athletics and mechanical plumbing and engineer. So at our last meeting, we had Tetra Tech, which is our architect group that we're working with. They provided an overview and for today, um again, we have some um resolutions that we need to move forward with in order to meet our uh projected voting day, which is October twenty eighth. So looking at these four uh particular areas and then we'll break this down in a little more detail with a proposition. Uh we're looking at safety and security, um May fifteenth of two thousand twenty five, we had some significant uh rain that occurred and we, we recognize the need uh for drainage improvements. Um and so that's, that's a priority for us. Um other areas in terms of safety and security, looking at door releases and cameras in all three buildings. Um an upgraded PA system, which will help with our overall communication uh from a safety and security standpoint. Curbs and paving are looking at pedestrians access uh to our buildings and our bus loop. Um traffic control. I think every single person in, in this space right now has been on our campus in a very busy time and recognizing that's a need for TruMansburg. Uh fine and performing arts, um our spaces are uh meeting the needs in terms of ADA uh compliance. However, we recognize that there's a greater need to make our space more accessible at the high school auditorium, which is often a central space for our community students uh for gathering. Um and so we're also looking at increased bathrooms, um changing spaces for our students during performances. And then also um the elementary school, which is a combined space for both middle school and elementary. Um the need for air conditioning. So under the updated law with New York State as of September one, if we are in a space that hits eighty-two degrees, we have to have uh practices in place to provide um to cool that space down. Once we hit the threshold of eighty-eight degrees, the students and staff need to leave that particular area. So having a cooled space in the auditorium at the elementary provide another alternate space for us to go, so we're not necessarily shifting to a closure. And so we look at that as a priority for this upcoming project. Um athletics, our track surface, um our track right now, we are getting to the point we've exceeded a ten-year threshold with the track. Uh so again, that does also fall under a, a safety consideration for our athletes and that track is used um from all three buildings and also with our community. Again, looking at drainage, the soccer field improvements, including the new, um we have a JV soccer team that's beginning right now. That field is used on a regular basis, both with the school and also the community, um high school gym improvements. Um we're looking at the middle school and uh high school locker room and renovations in terms of access. Uh we're also looking at bathrooms and knowing that we have a need from a public standpoint. Um access also plumbing. And then we are looking at cooling into elementary classrooms. Uh I mentioned the, the bathrooms, that's all three buildings that we're looking at. And electrical panel replacements. So these are the four uh primary areas that we're focusing for this upcoming capital project.
Thank you.
Yes.
Um thank you. I, you had mentioned, you had said fine and performing art. I think it's really important when we go forward with more information and public that instead of just saying performing arts, it's, do we add the fine and performing arts because of this, the added gallery space, which would support the curriculum of the fine arts department?
Yes, I appreciate that. Uh yes. Yep, absolutely, Jen. So that was a news for performances, but also I've talked.
Um so we've been meeting regularly through both the facilities, committee meetings, um and stakeholder meetings. And we've also been meeting as a team for communication. Um I think one of the key pieces here, um the to be able to engage the community around what it is exactly that will be asked to vote for in October. Right? And to be able to have opportunities and forums to ask questions and also to just have a learning opportunity. So as you can see on this slide, this is our initial thinking. Um all draft, these are just very sample. If you actually were to drill them, there's probably some Latin on those. So if you did take that in high school, you might have some love reading them. But um this is just, again, we're in the planning phase of why that word is so important. We hope to have some community conversations in October, early October, prior to the vote, at least two weeks prior. And maybe even um some other opportunities to sort of tag on to our events that are already occurring through our PTAs, our boosters, um our concerts, our sporting events. We'll have digital media, that website, we've already started to put information onto the website page for Capital Project twenty twenty five. Um we'll have print me- media, we know that people like to receive things, especially with their kids as deliverers, right? So that'll be backpack trailers, newsletters, emails um from principals, we hope to have um really easy to sort of cut and paste into their existing newsletters to be able to continue to update that information and put that forward. Posters and poster boards, large things, we do a lot of community members use our spaces for walking and their own physical activities and be able to have that to stop. Take your water break, be able to read um those banners or those posters would be really important for us. Um we're also thinking about having um scripted information at sporting events or other events that could be read for folks, so then that way they know where to go. We're hoping to have a mix of both, you know, sort of text savvy like QR code, but then also something you can take away that has enough information for you. And then finally, we would also want to do some mailers, right? So that uh for folks who are registered voters, they'd be able to get um some sort of information, so just like a budget packet, right, that they would, they would know about this project.
One thing I think that is important when we're putting our messaging out there is to um communicate that this is a hundred percent routine maintenance that has to be done. Like, you know, it's, it's, this was, we don't do it every year. We go out every, what, five, six, seven years with the capital project, but it's not be, like, most of this is essential work in order to maintain the health and safety standards of our buildings, right? I mean, that's key. It's not like we're.
Amanda, you, you said uh registered voters. This is, if these people who are eligible to vote for our school board elections are the same folks that would be eligible to so they don't have to be registered for a, the presidential election, they have to be residents of our school district for thirty days.
Right. It would follow the same procedures. Tina will have absentee ballots available. We will do the ballots in person, right? The same um considerations that we would have for the school budget vote. The capital project votes aligned with that.
And the date we're.
So we have the four, the four resolutions uh that you'll see on tonight's agenda. Um the way that we have broken this down in terms of this project is there are two different propositions. All right, and we recognize that as, as Megan said, there are critical items that we need to address for the campus. But we also know that this particular capital project is not as grand as our last capital project in terms of the funding that we have available. So we're mindful of that. So what we're looking at right now is the proposition one, we have the thirteen point six million of a no local share. And then proposition two is four point seven. And so there are some additional items that we've included in that proposition two. Uh and so with that proposition two, with that additional cost, so in order for us to get to proposition two, proposition one needs to pass. And so that approximate cost there for the tax levy, the point zero and point eight eight tax levy increase, which is would be about ten cents per one thousand. So you'll see the two different propositions that are on the agenda for this evening. And then we also have the public notice for the votes. Answer your question, that's October twenty eighth. At the Ulysses Historical Society. I believe that we have that from twelve to eight, you know.
The only other thing that I'd like to add, because I realized that I put an acronym on there and that is really difficult for folks that don't live in this world all the time. Um SICRA or SICER um stands for State Environmental Quality Review Act. It is um a process that um with the guidance of architects and legal, the, the board would go through to declare what type of project this is. Type one projects typically have impacts where we're doing intense um additions, remodeling, right? Really like you're disturbing ground, land. The type twos are more um smaller additions, renovations, things that we're looking at. That's why this qualifies as a type two. Um and so that analysis um and declaration is part of the first resolution language.
You'll see the breakdown of the type two, um what that definition is, the type two action uh under that resolution, it's, and then this is number page twelve of seventeen for the agenda. So this is just an overview, again, looking at our communication plan, our, really our big kickoff will be for upcoming open houses. And then early October, we will have a public session for the community to come in here, a more formal presentation where we're getting into the design process. Uh we will have Tetra Tech here as well for that, for that presentation.
And if anyone that missed it, they did present in our meeting last month, which they could go back and watch that video if they're interested in information from the architects.
Oh, I'd, I'd like to say that having sat in through many, many hours of facilities meetings, this is everything in here, you've done a lot of listening to everybody in this district and, and measures all the way down, that this is a very tight list that you've, you've prepared and I, I have to say, Megan, I applaud you for being very mindful of taxpayer dollars and, and I've seen how you're, what, what you prioritize. And so I, I'm hoping that we will get their support from our community for this, the, and, and I also want to note that the, even the planning of having this, this uh uh vote on October twenty eighth, really being mindful of people who are snowbirds who may be leaving the area for the holidays and giving this done this fall. So thank you for all the hard work that's got it into, up to this point already.
Thank you. Thanks to our committee. Um we are recognizing, if you look at the building condition survey, we really had to go back and working with our teams and be strategic as far as one of the priority items that we can accomplish with this upcoming capital project for twenty twenty seven. But then also looking ten years down the road as well, as far as um how we can continue our work and be really strategic and mindful as far as where we are from a financial standpoint and then also maintaining the structure, facility, the program for our students.
Right, and to mention the large list of things that were brought up that did not make it on here, so to even get here was brilliant. Lot of work, so thank you.
Anyone else have any comments or questions? Barring none, we're moving on to consent agenda and I look at our motion to take item seven A through seventeen collectively. And if there's anything anyone would like to fill for further discussion. Seven seconds, I can. Any comments, questions, discussions, or anything people would like to remove for discussion? All in favor, opposed, abstention? Consent agenda carries, moving on to new business. Resolution of the Board of Education for the TruMansburg Central School District. Um Tompkins County, New York, determining the capital project for repairs and renovations of certain district buildings and facilities as a type two action. Where's the actual resume? You're so used to it saying on the record, this is super potential, so I just read, I'll just read it here. Okay. Whereas the TruMansburg Central School District, the district is considering undertaking the con- the reconstruction, renovations, improvements and repairs to the district's buildings and facilities, including athletic field and other site work. Collectively, the project, whereas the project consists of repair, reconstruction, replacement and renovation of certain restrooms, flooring, PA systems, HVAC, outdoor walkways, track resurfacing, auditorium walls and entries at various school district buildings and facilities, including Charlesville Dickerson High School, Russell Lloyd Middle School, TruMansburg Elementary School and the Transportation and Maintenance Building. And whereas the Board of Education of the district seeks authorization of the duly qualified voters of the district to undertake the project, whereas the district now desires to comply with New York State Environmental Quality Review Act and the regulations in six NYCRR art six one seven adopted by New York State Department of Environmental Conservation with respect to the project, whereas pursuant to the regulations, the district has considered the project in light of the actions included on type one listed specifically in section six one seven point four of the regulation. Specifically in section six one seven point four of the regulations and in light of the actions included on the type two list specified in section six one seven point five of the regulations. Whereas the court of state has held segmentation cannot occur if one or more of the projects are type two actions. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education of the District as follows. One, the district has determined that the project constitutes a type two action. Um, as the quoted term is defined in the regulations, because it falls clearly within. The ambit of three actions included on the type two list specified. Routine activity, maintenance or repairs, replacement, rehabilitation or reconstruction of a structure or facility. The project is not subject to further review under SECR and notwithstanding that project is not subject to review under SECR. The district will continue to comply with the New York State. Ed guidelines for school district implementation of state environmental quality review and associated changes. In the stated building permit process, which require consultation with this New York State Office of Parks Recreation and Historic Preservation. And a copy of this resolution shall be provided to the New York State Education Department. Motion? Move. Second, Steven? Hopefully we're not changing anything. Questions, comments, discussions? All in favor? Opposed, abstention, motion carries, do you want me to take the next one or are you still good?
I'm okay.
Still good. Not doing D, B and C I can do. Capital project vote proposition one, shall the following resolution be adopted to it, resolve that the Board of Education of the TruMansburg Central School District is hereby authorized. To undertake certain capital improvements consisting of addition to construction and reconstruction of existing school buildings and facilities, including without limitation, security upgrades at the elementary and middle school. Auditorium improvements. And the addition of a standby generator at the high school, air conditioning improvements in the elementary school auditorium and high school gymnasium, drainage and various. Site, track and athletic field improvements and the acquisition of certain original furnishings, equipment and apparatus and other incidental improvements required in connection there. With for such constructions, full use, all at an estimated maximum aggregate cost of thirteen million, six hundred and thirty five thousand dollars. And to appropriate and expend from the existing capital reserve fund, three point two million dollars for such costs, and that the balance of such costs. Or so much thereof as may be necessary shall be raised by the levy of a tax to be collected in annual installments, with such tax to be offset by state aid available thereafter. And anticipation of such tax debt obligations of the school district may be nece- may be necessary not to exceed eleven million, four hundred and thirty five. Dollars shall be issued. Motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Questions, comments, discussions?
Um, I don't see this language at all on the agenda when I click on it, the link, so Tina, can you?
Online?
Online, so can you, like, after the meeting, can we just make sure that all of this that she read is available for?
Strange.
It was there last night, it had gone now.
I don't know what to tell, it's still here for me.
Okay.
It's strange, right?
I didn't try to look right now, it was there last, yeah.
Is it there for you, Tanya?
I'm looking.
Want to make sure it's there, if, just in case someone's gonna look for it.
I wasn't paying attention, would you repeat this?
This is why we only do capital projects every six to seven years, because otherwise someone has to sit here and read this whole.
Yeah, but here, where, where, like, if I'm thinking, I'm sorry, forgive me, but like, I haven't, is it now? Now, okay, you could go one, one deeper in there.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
Okay, all in favor? Opposed, abstention, motion carries, capital project vote proposition two. If proposition number one is approved, you gave me time to catch my breath, thank you, that was just, I actually asked him to do that, just so that I. If proposition one is approved, shall the following resolution be adopted to it, resolve that the Board of Education of the TruMansburg Central School District is hereby authorized to undertake certain additional capital improvements. Consisting of reconstruction of existing school buildings and facilities, including without limitation, high school stage. Improvements, air conditioning improvements in two elementary school classrooms. And the student services wing at the high school, improvements to toilet rooms at the middle school and additional critical replacement of electric panels, various site work. Or various site sidewalk JV soccer field improvements and. The acquisition of certain original furnishings, equipment and apparatus and other incidental improvements required in connection therewith through such construction and school use, all at an estimated maximum aggregate cost of. Four million, seven hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, and at such cost, um, or so much thereof as may be necessary, shall be raised by the levy of tax to be collected in annual installments. With such tax to be offset by state aid available there. For and anticipation of such tax debt obligations of the school district may be necessary not to exceed such estimated maximum aggregate cost shall be issued. The school district acting as lead agency to the extent necessary, if any, for this purpose under the state. Environmental Quality Review Act and the applicable regulations. Um, that's a new one for me, prom. Thereunder has completed its environmental review and on August nineteenth, twenty twenty five, has been determined it's bound to be capital improvements. Herein to constitute individually and collectively a type two action under SECR, which will not have a significant impact on the environment and is not subject to any further environmental review under SECR.
So moved.
Second? I'll take you over, Tanya. Questions, comments, discussions? All in favor? Opposed? Abstention, motion carries, and since the public notice contains the majority of the text that I just read out loud, I'm gonna just ask for a motion to approve. Item D as presented on the agenda, now that we've confirmed it's available online, second? Suzanne? Questions, comments or discussions? All in favor? Opposed, abstention, motion carries? Okay, adoption of, oh, number, perfect, I was hoping there'd be more fun stuff. Adoption of tax warrant, uh, be resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education of the TruMansburg. Central School District hereby adopts warrant and establishes that twenty five, twenty six school tax rate as presented. For Hector, Covert, Enfield, Ulysses and the Village of TruMansburg, please note that all communities have New York State Office of Real. Property Tax Services Equalization Rate of a hundred percent, except for Hector, which has New York State. Office of Real Property Tax Service Equalization Rate of seventy three percent. Please note that these rates are preliminary, Seneca County's um, by L merge process occurs at a later day in August and can impact the school tax bill amounts presented this evening. If this occurs, we will need to recalculate the tax rate for all communities and present revised amounts at the September Board of Education meeting. Motion? Even second, Jamie, questions, comments or discussions? All in favor? Opposed, abstention, motion carries, I think it's important to note here again that the equalization rate has nothing to do with us, we don't set that, we are at the mercy of the state there. Authorization to sign a memorandum of agreement, be it resolved that the Board of Education for the TruMansburg Central School District hereby authorizes the Superintendent of Schools to sign a memorandum of agreement between the TruMansburg. Teachers Association and the TruMansburg Central School District for unit member tuition wave as presented, motion? Second? Suzanne, questions, comments, discussions? Tanya?
Me, Tanya, thank you.
All in favor? Opposed, abstention, motion carries? Moving on to board forum, I know we need to discuss meeting dates, but before we do that. Fun stuff, does anybody have anything else they'd like to bring up, or, me and I, do you have anything to add to share?
Um, not I do. I just want to share that I want to thank all of the families who, and the teachers and everyone who jumped in and helped out with parking for the. Um, for grass roots that support the eighth grade, um, Washington DC and the sports and music boosters. Um, it was a fantastic success and we couldn't do it without all the volunteers who came out and uh, helped park some cars, so thank y'all.
Further comment on Jeannie's talking about how the buildings look, I noticed the floors in the high school, I haven't been in the other building, so I, I'm not prejudiced. I'm fair, favoring the high school, but the floors look fan, they look fantastic.
I um, I'll go.
Hey, you were today, Jim.
No, no. So I recently just saw this small thing come up on my, my feed about um, libraries in, in Finland and all things as that. That um, are also letting students um, check out tools, including sewing machines to um, you know. Create um, opportunities for students to not have to buy such tools to create. Um, and these are used in um, public libraries and they're thinking like, wow, when's the last time I saw a sewing machine in our school? And I asked Josh before his meeting, like, where are sewing machines, like, I think Justin, they might be where?
They're in the middle.
Middle school.
They're in the middle, right? And, and maybe it could be a cool idea to maybe. Bring back a sewing machine or two in some of these spaces, maybe there are some students that want to learn how to create some things, I know that, that um, some students um, have gone to. Um, summer camp where they've learned to use the sewing machines and, and they may not have them available at home, but maybe this is some thing that we could. Perhaps bring back. To our students. Um, so maybe that's something for, for administration to, to think about and, and um, bring to that opportunity, maybe um. That's kind of cool and um. But lastly, uh.
You only have two things?
I only have two things, so we're in this really awesome space, the, the high school library, um, and I bring it up because um. Our community lost incredible, incredible former employee of this district who spent twenty nine years in this high school library. As uh, library aide with Kathy Bond, and prior to that, um, Linda O'Leary, don't speak of this little area, was a home teacher. Um, started in nineteen seventy six, dear. And she spent nearly four decades. Um, in her school district, in this high school. And she, she passed away unexpectedly last week and left a big, big, full and a, a loving legacy for. Many generations of students and who. Who wanted to honor her.
Anybody have anything else before we?
I do, I think uh. The uh, music boosters is having some fundraisers for the fair and they need people tomorrow to uh, sell raffle tickets. Uh, at the, the Derby event, people over eighteen and on Saturday. And then Saturday, uh, from three to eight, parking cars, they're, they're getting some money from the, the fair for that, so. Anybody's available to help out music boosters tomorrow or Saturday? Get in touch and they'll uh. Set you up, they can use it.
That's awesome.
It just came up at the last minute that they got these opportunities apparently, so.
Yes, so, so I asked them because we had some spots.
Oh, you did, oh, okay.
Um, so yeah, so the, the sports, a lot of our sports programs tend to do that and it's our practice that. Um, when we have other spots open, we go to the other.
Yeah, that's true, okay, yeah, so yeah, I just got notified about it this morning, yeah, I thought you'd bring it up, so.
Yeah, that's what we.
Thanks to sports boosters.
Tickets for before.
What's that, oh, oh, that's, oh, now it ends up.
All makes sense now.
All the work you guys, we too. Sorry. Yeah, so thanks. Anybody, no?
Um, I just wanted to kind of add on, I know you're talking about the sewing machine thing, so. I know I work as a costume manager, we actually had a few sewn, uh, back in Ms. Lewis's room that she actually brought over for us, and that was kind of cool. So, yeah, I guess that'd be cool to integrate too, and I know you're talking about like kind of blending things. And I don't think we have quite that system, but I know I definitely went to our steam room a lot this year and like this past year, and I was like, hey, can I borrow this for blank or whatever? So I feel like there's like kind of a bit of an implementation in that, but it'd be kind of cool to have more of a system, because I sort of went in and was like, hey, you have. You know, X, Y, Z, and then we'd see if we had it, but yeah.
I think.
In the library.
I think the Tompkins County Library is already, um, sewing machines, I think.
They do, my mom was a librarian there, it's like the library of things, that's what they call it, and I know the Tru, yeah, Tru.
TruMansburg, I can't remember if TruMansburg has sewing machines, but you know, maybe we get some. I, I'm happy to donate fabric, I, I might have a small um, stash of fabric as a filter that I would be happy to give to the school. Should there be desire.
Maybe if it's student driven interest, maybe we'll find the, the space and, and the materials to, to. Expand our library offerings and hopefully not just in this building, but in, in other buildings in the district.
You want your students checking out the sewing machine?
So we might start with our knitting that we have during recess, yeah, I can see. Um, Gail Purnon does do it in the steam, wait a bit, um, she, she does a sewing program in steam, I'm not trying to, it's great, but in middle school, so they are getting pulled out.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
It also happens at the high school as well.
Yeah.
I've seen this thing, Jason.
I have a lot of pants that need to be. Shocked. I, I hear you, I'm right there with you. Yeah. So.
Yep.
I, yes, so I will.
Let's unearth the sewing machines and bring them back.
I employ my youngest and he learns to sew and he has two sewing machines and he fixes many floating items for us. And yet no one puts it on, I'm jealous, you've got all kinds of pictures in your house and no one's a tech fixer and, yeah.
Yes.
There's a lot of things for him.
I think this is it. That's right.
I love the knitting during recess, Jeannie thing, that would be a great Troubadour article for the next issue, which would be out not till December, but. I can remember to ask who to get some, or if you might be willing to, we, even a picture, you know, and a couple captions would be really cool, just to let people.
Jeannie, do they, do they use knitting machines or needles? To, so just have a couple of the round. Oh, knitting machines for kids who can't do so well with the.
Intuition, I had a teacher several years ago and. Going back again and had a, a club, a knitting club, um, with a good class, so, and a lot of great opportunities.
I have to say that since I brought up the, the F word, Finland, and I will say that uh, students in, in Finland, when they learn how to sew. And if they pass, they get what we call it, a sewing machine driver's license. And so once you've learned how to use a sewing machine and you can drive it safely, and then you, you're licensed to sew, so. Yeah.
Do you get a fine if you sew without a license?
You know, one, you could really, really mess up a sewing machine if you like jam it up and you don't like.
Mess up your fingers.
Yeah, so it's important, and, and like this fancy template first, uh, the, you can all say it as well. Um, it's the driver's license.
Nice.
Yes.
No. You did.
Moving on to something far less exciting than sewing machines, uh, committee meeting dates. Tina kindly printed out the calendar and a list of the dates following a similar schedule that we used last year. So right now, I would ask if anyone has any conflicts in the coming. Three, September, October, November dates, and then maybe we can handle the rest of those. Um, on, at a committee level and, and adjust the calendar online accordingly.
I do, of course, because, you know, I'd like to be a pain, but.
Does anyone besides Tanya have any conflicts, or then they can just go to her?
Yes.
Yeah, that's right, all right, well, Tanya, go first, and.
So um, our September nineteenth athletics committee meeting, I'm wondering if we could move that a week earlier to the twelfth? I thought I can try to switch some things around for the nineteenth, but. Twelve would be a little bit easier.
I just stuffed stuff in there kind of on the calendar, so I think it's flexible, it's on this.
And then I have the same challenge with the October one, if we can meet that a week earlier.
Megan has a conflict from the twelfth.
So I'll leave it, but then next week I'll submit it.
And then the October one, though, could we move, remove the October one to the tenth? Yes, we can move that one to October. Wait, what day is that, Wednesday?
Well, Friday.
Oh, wait, I'm thinking. Uh, yes, I, I know, I know, I was looking, but my, my conflicts are on my phone, on my phone. So that one, the tenth?
Yeah. And then. And I'm just gonna go over, because then I don't have any till like way later.
Okay.
Um, the October twenty seventh policy committee meeting, and we do that on the twentieth?
Which would, October what?
October twenty seven. And we do that on the twelfth? Or now, just like.
Let's see, that will work soon. Yeah.
No conflicts on this end?
I have a conflict for the twenty second for policy, any chance that that could be moved to the twenty fourth?
Of September?
September, September twenty two.
Wait, going back, are we in agreement that the twenty seventh meeting can get changed to the twentieth? Assume on that safe, or policy, October twenty seventh?
Yeah.
And then the twenty second?
Did that go to the twenty fourth since we are? You know, I mean, that, that, it's like twenty fourth. Hopefully it's a Wednesday.
Of Sept-
Number.
September, the twenty fourth is September, so.
There's a facilities transition, food service, anyway.
Two, two of Dana, she's not here.
That work, the twenty fourth is. That work, the twenty fourth is fine for me.
Megan, would that work?
How are we?
Yes, I'm not, I'm not on that one.
The twenty fourth of September, keeping it on the twenty fourth of September. It's on the twenty center and I'm twenty to the twenty fourth.
So yeah, this one just gets added to this long day.
Okay, let's add it. Thank you.
Are there any other conflicts for September, October, November? So just to confirm, we've changed, the September policy meeting is down the twenty fourth, athletics will stay, Tanya will figure that out.
Yeah.
But the October athletics meeting is moving one week earlier to the tenth. And then policy is moving one week earlier from October twenty seventh to the twentieth.
Yeah.
Everything else for until the end of November stays how it is.
And then, Jean, I just have one question, maybe. Let's stick on here, um for the policy committee meeting, I know December like is.
One hundred and fifty eight.
A a long time, so I'm assuming it's the fifteenth. That's what I was assuming, I just wanted to make sure, which which date was the typo? I mean, I love having a lot of days in December, because they got a lot of things to do, but.
December one fifty eight, whichever.
Megan, are you okay that we leave the rest of the meetings as is and then if there's a conflict within the committee that can be discussed, you reschedule and.
Sounds great.
Can update.
Is it okay if I post all of these online how they are and then we?
Is there any way that maybe the November nineteenth facilities meeting should be seventeen? It would be a day before a board meeting, because unless you want. It's the ninth, we have a board meeting on the eighteenth, so would that be beneficial for you, Miss Superintendent, to maybe have facilities?
It follows directly for those of us that are on transportation.
Well, and there's information tech meeting that day at eight, so they'd be conflicting time, I don't know how many people that involves.
And Stevens.
We can leave it there, like, do we need facilities after a board meeting or is it better for the board meeting?
Yeah, and the vote, at that point, I mean, we will be talking about the next level of design. Um, we need to shift that and the recognition, we have several other people here. We can have a follow up conversation that. Okay, anything else for board forum or, I think, yeah, Coach Hammer can get outside.
Yes, as I get ready to run to football practice, uh I will quickly say that we have new opportunity for girls in the district. Third, fourth, fifth and sixth grade girls, we are going to have for the first time ever in TruMansburg, a girls' flag football team. So if you are interested, uh you can join what I am saying is going to be the first state championship team when they ultimately get to high school. Look us up and and join, we'd love to have you.
You're opening it up soon.
Little, yeah, yeah.
And I should have mentioned this earlier, but it was just great, the athletics, um there was a kickoff fall sports meeting the other night and it was just, it was packed, it's great. Alex, all the coaches, all the parents, all the, you know, athletes that showed up, it was just an exciting uh back to, back to the season of that, so. All was in the air.
Couple more weeks before we all start, so enjoy the last few weeks of summer and um I hope everybody has a very successful school year.
Great. So moving on to adjournment, be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education for the TruMansburg Central School District adjourns at six twenty eight. Two minutes earlier than I told Jamie Cammer for the.
She'll move.
Second, even questions, comments, discussions?
Should I talk after minutes?